I'd like to call the Monday, May 16, 2016 City Council meeting to order. Please call and roll.
Alderman Santi?
Here.
Alderman Glav?
Here.
Alderman Schaefer?
Here.
Alderman Curry?
Here.
Alderman Wimmer?
Here.
Alderman Peterson?
Here.
Alderman Condon? Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is required of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The City of McHenry's mission statement reads as follows. The City of McHenry is dedicated to providing its citizens, businesses, and visitors with the highest quality of programs and services in a customer-oriented, efficient, and fiscally responsible manner. The first item on our agenda this evening is a proclamation recognizing National Garden Week, June 5 through 11 in the City of McHenry, to the McHenry Garden Club. So I would like to read the proclamation out loud and then I'll present it to you. Whereas National Garden Club was established in order to stimulate the love and knowledge of gardening and to aid in the protection of native trees, birds, shrubs, and wildflowers; and whereas the National Garden Club encourages the accomplishment of at least one community garden project each year, civic planting, and the establishment of a community garden club; and whereas the McHenry Garden Club was instituted in January of 2004 and embraces the goals and objections, objectives, I'm sorry, of the National Garden Club; and whereas the McHenry Garden Club hopes to foster and stimulate a love of gardening, knowledge of gardening practices, and aid in the protection of native trees, birds, shrubs, and wildflowers. Now therefore, I, Susan E. Lau, Mayor of McHenry, do hereby proclaim, June 5 through 11, National Garden Week in the City of McHenry, and I urge all citizens to recognize the efforts of the McHenry Garden Club who volunteer their time, talents, and creativity for the beautification, education, and benefit of our community. So I'd like to present this to you ladies. Come on forward.
No, we just really do appreciate being part of McHenry and we really do enjoy the many projects that we do within the city. So we hope to continue that for a long time.
Thank you. We truly appreciate all that you do around town at Peterson Farm, Arbor Day, all the ways that you participate in beautification in our community. We really appreciate it. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is public comment, and we have one person signed in this evening, Craig Wilcox of 5905. Is that right? Huh? 5908? Wait and dry. Sorry.
Yeah, I just noticed that during the last meeting you had a question on what was happening with the Marine Recruiting Center, with the Taborian going in. And everything I've learned, it is closing. So for those that are interested in the Marines, the central location is on Randall Road in Lake in the Hills. So when you find those young men and women, you'll be able to let them know where to go to join the Marines.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Craig. It was interesting last night was the Warriors' recognition dinner, the distinguished warriors, and I think there was five students out of 132 that had already committed to the military. So that was interesting. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. I keep looking at you guys. Sorry. Alderman Curry?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of items A and E.
A and E?
E.
Okay, so items B?
B, C, D, F, G, H, I.
Was there a second to that motion? Alderman Santi?
I will second that.
Any discussion on those items? Alderman Curry?
A couple of things. On the Northeast Illinois Regional Crime Membership, what is the maintenance agreement? What is that?
Their facility they have for all the members pay a portion of the facility cost for the upkeep of the building. That's added as part of our agreement.
Okay. And the only other question I had is the, on the treatment of the malting treatment on the streets that we have on item D, which I think is, looks like a pretty good thing to try. It's relatively inexpensive. But are they the only ones that do this everywhere? Or is it just in our area?
Yeah, in our area, the Chicago line area, they have exclusive rights to that chemical.
But it is used in other areas?
Yes, around the country.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Wimmer? Any questions?
No.
Alderman Peterson?
No questions.
Alderman Condon?
No questions.
Alderman Santi?
Just a quick note on item C, that we came in under budget, which is great to know, and they did an excellent job in regards to that. The Phase One Approvements, Eric, the municipal side.
Alderman Glav?
No.
Alderman Schaefer?
No questions.
Any further discussion on those items? Please call and roll.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Wimmer?
Yes.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Peterson?
Yes.
Alderman Glav?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Looking for a motion on item A. Alderman?
Motion to approve item A as presented.
Is there a second? Alderman Condon? Discussion on item A, Alderman Wimmer? Alderman Peterson?
I have no questions.
Alderman Condon?
No questions.
Alderman Santi?
Just a quick question I had, just noticing the 3%. Are they, are they asking for 3% each year? Or they're keeping it less than 3%?
It's less than 3%.
And the number is, or do we know?
It's between 2 and 3. It's not the same.
Yeah, I think the first year was 2.47 and the second year was 2.49. Between year one and year two, 2.46, 4.7, and the second year was 2.48, 4.9. I can't remember the exact, but we calculate. And that's the total, all the numbers from one year to the next year.
Do we normally go three years with audits?
Yes.
You can do. Thank you.
Alderman Glav?
Yeah, nothing.
Alderman Schaefer?
No questions.
Alderman Curry?
A couple of questions. I guess first of all, at the bottom of the first page, it talks about rotating of personnel. What exactly does that mean? Is that internal personnel within the year of the cell? Or is this out, external audit people?
Through Sarbanes, it's referred to the Sarbanes-Oxley Act, which I can't remember the exact date it was passed. But that's internal rotation of personnel. So at a minimum, every five years, they rotate. Then we confirm with them that they do it. They rotate not only the audit staff that conducts the audit in-house here, but also the audit, the staff in their office that then reviews the results of the audit that's conducted by us or for us.
But, okay, so, but they're all either
That's correct.
... personnel.
Yes.
You know, this is services being provided. I realize that we've been quite satisfied, I think, with their service over the years. But it has been 18 years, I think, that we've used the same auditing firm. I guess the question is, have we ever sent out for requests for proposal with different auditing firms?
Not, not that I know of.
No, well, I've been here.
So we use the same one the entire time. Okay. Just, you know, commented, I guess, to me, it might be something we want to look at down the road, that we get a separate, you know, different firm at some point in time. Just to get a different look at. You know, the downside to me to that is it's going to be a different format when we get the report, I'm sure. And so that's, that's a little bit problematic. But it's just the idea of auditing is supposed, you know, I know in your comments about familiarity, but a lot of times with auditing, familiarity is not necessarily a plus because you want them to be totally objective, you know, with what they're looking at. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on item A? Please call and roll. Alderman Wimmer?
Yes.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Glav?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Peterson?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Looking for a motion on item E to approve an agreement with Compass Mineral America for the purchase of road salt for an amount not to exceed $91,515. Alderman Curry?
I'll make that motion as presented.
Is there a second? Alderman Condon? Discussion, Alderman Curry?
Question. Is this a, has the salt already been purchased?
It has not.
It has not.
Or this is asking to issue a purchase order to go in a contract with the salt company?
Okay. So this salt will be delivered at what time period?
Hopefully, at the very end of next season that we don't need it. Like we did this year. We just took our order this year.
Well, I guess that was made my confusion. I could have asked earlier, but I just kind of noticed this. When I was at the South Waste Water Treatment Plant recently and noticed that there was this pile of 2,000 tons of salt that's behind the building. And I guess my understanding was they just finished delivering the salt and they were turp, in the process of tarping the pile.
Right. They had to take delivery by, I think, end of May.
So this was actually for last year's?
Yes.
So, okay. All right, thank you.
Alderman Wimmer?
No questions.
Alderman Peterson?
No questions.
Alderman Condon?
No questions.
I have no questions.
Alderman Glav?
No questions.
Alderman Schaefer?
Isn't that price lower than what we paid this last year too? For what we're getting?
Considerably better. And then we had, last year, we had an option too, to take the second year option this year. And we're going to save about $20,000 with revision.
Right. That was, I noticed that. It was always based on the prior year's history, it seems like, because the year before that, it was that no one could find salt.
Supply and demand.
Yep. Very good. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Just one further comment, if I may. And I had, had a mark that I forgot to mention is, it was nice to see that, you know, we put out for six different companies. We got four back and, and then of course, what Alderman Schaefer just mentioned, in fact, we ended up, what we opted out of the second year of the prior contract. So that was, that was very nice.
The timing worked out.
Yeah.
We went out to, I had to let them know by May 1st if we're going to take the second year option. And we opened the bids at the end of April, so the timing couldn't have been perfect. So I'll try the same thing next year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Please call and roll.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Glav?
Yes.
Alderman Wimmer?
Yes.
Alderman Peterson?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. The next item is a motion to approve the 2016 Street Resurfacing Program Professional Services Agreement with HR Green Incorporated for the lump sum amount of $60,000, less than 3% of the construction estimate for design engineering, a time and material amount not to exceed 5% of, I'm sorry, 5% of final construction cost for construction observation engineering, and authorization to publicly bid construction of the project. John?
Thank you, Mayor. Chef requests City Council to consider a professional service agreement with HR Green for the design engineering, construction observation engineering of the 2016 Street Resurfacing Program, including the Lakeland Park Community Center parking lot and miscellaneous sidewalk removal replacement.
Thank you. Looking for a motion on this item? Alderman Glav?
I'll make that motion as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second? Alderman Wimmer?
Second.
Discussion, Alderman Glav?
It's just the fact that, quite happy to see the percentages that we have for the engineering this round and that hopefully our construction prices come in just as low.
Thank you. Alderman Schaefer?
No questions.
Alderman Curry?
Questions on the, we've been through this before, but on the, on the rates that come out when you divide out the man-hour estimates and the labor cost. You know, we have this one, and of course, we've got another one on the docket here. But we have multiple rates for project manager, project engineer, staff engineer, et cetera, et cetera. In fact, the only one's the same as the administration one. I guess I'd like a explanation again as to how, how those rates are decided. In this one, under design, we've got project manager at $208.33 an hour. If you divide it out under bidding, it's $200 an hour even. And on our observation again, it's $208.33. Just an example. And the engineering is the same, the project engineer. It's varying numbers. And in fact, if I include the next project on the docket, there's going to be, there's seven different rates for project manager. There's nine different rates for project engineer. And there's four different rates for staff engineer.
All right. This is something similar that we've discussed on prior projects. The format that we put this in, that I like to take the approach on, different phases, we have different people in the office doing it, different levels of experience. In one role, we'll have myself listed as in the project management category. We'll have a vice president that's doing QC. On another project, like the Lakeland Park Drainage Ditch, we have a phase manager, all doing project management. All three of us have different bill rates. Instead of listing out and having the entire page, one hour here, two hours there, and tracking everybody through all these phases, I'm combining the phases down, putting the project management under the one heading, list as a project manager, combine the hours and giving that, that number there. That's the same way that we've done all the last contracts that we've just done, the treatment plant. The same explanation that we went through there. It's just combining the people. Staff engineers, we may have three or four staff engineers on a certain task. One may be a staff engineer three, one may be a staff engineer one. They have a different billing rate. So instead of throwing 30 people down here and getting everybody confused as to which engineer is doing what, combine those into one, average out their, their rates for their hours. And that's, that's where the numbers come from.
So these are all average rates?
Well, they're the combined totals. Whoever, if someone has 10 hours, you take their rate times their 10 hours, add it to the next person that's got their 10 hours at their rate, combine it together, and that's what's shown.
We get some of them come out exactly the same to the penny and some of them vary quite widely. And in fact, when, again, when I compare this one to the next project, you know, like the project manager and the project engineer, actually, those rates are considerably higher than the one for the drainage ditch. And I guess, again, you, you guys know better than I. It seems to me the expertise for looking at the drainage situation is higher than, than our road program.
I would tend to argue that, but we do have a different mix. On our drainage side, we do have a younger project manager that has been taking on a lot more projects. He's on there. He's a local guy who grew up in McHenry. He's been familiar with the drainage projects since he was born. His father lives over there. We were able to take advantage of having a lower-priced, yet quality person on the project for the city, and the savings come through. On our road projects, we have guys that have, you know, years of experience dealing with IDOT, and they know these situations. Their experience comes through with being able to reduce the amount of hours that they have to spend on the project because they can get their task done quicker than somebody else. Yes, it changes the rates, but that's, put the best mix of people on the job.
So this estimate is based on a combination of people in each of these areas, a combination of hourly rates, and yet we come out to even dollars to the penny, actually, on both of these projects.
Right. Not some of them. I mean, the way that they come through and we're calculating this stuff, if it comes to $100.51, I put down $100. I don't want to be carrying 51 cents, 35 cents, all that kind of stuff the way the numbers break through. So I come down to an even number.
Thank you.
Alderman Wimmer?
No questions.
Alderman Peterson? Alderman Condon? Alderman Santi?
Well, I'm trying to listen to this. Numbers do get confusing from time to time. But the one question I ask, and I guess, I don't know if it's towards chat or to staff, which of these category lines would we be eliminating with our internal position in the future?
Looking down the road, as we get someone on staff and our workload, if he could assist with the construction observation.
And which project manager, project engineer? Project engineer?
We are currently looking for a project engineer.
So that would be taking away that project engineering line? One I'm looking at for, under construction observation. I guess we, would we be eliminating bidding and eliminating design too?
No.
Just the one area out of the three?
And that depends on his workload, on the projects.
And the task at hand, I think.
And how many different engineers we have working at the time that he's managing.
No, but I, what I like to, I just want to see what title it is and which one, kind of get a reference, so I have some knowledge in the future in regards to what we're looking at.
But I don't think John can, you know, unequivocally say that's what will happen.
No, no, I'm not looking for, I just wanted to make sure, looking at an actual title, and to see of which of the areas potentially, you know, will be showing some dollars saved there that actually are invested in someone on our staff in the future. That's the only question I have right now. Thanks.
Any further discussion on this item? Please call and roll.
Alderman Glav?
Yes.
Alderman Wimmer?
Yes.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
No.
Alderman Peterson?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a motion to approve the Lakeland Park Drainage Study Professional Services Agreement with HR Green for an amount not to exceed $50,000. John?
Thank you, Mayor. Staff request City Council to consider a professional service agreement with HR Green for the Lakeland Park Drainage Study.
Looking for a motion on this item? Alderman Wimmer?
Make a motion to approve the attached PSA with HR Green for the Lakeland Park Drainage Study in an amount not to exceed $50,000.
Thank you. Is there a second? Alderman Peterson? Discussion, Alderman Wimmer?
This is another study going along with a few of the past studies that we've had, and it's hopefully something tons of it.
Thank you. Alderman Peterson?
It'll give us some direction, I guess. I would take that to find out what needs to be done.
Correct. We're going to come up with some alternatives. We're looking at long-term solution on this, not just going in there and dredging. Dredge. But stopping it from filling in, not just spending millions of dollars to fill it again.
So just Boone Creek is filled in in the last 20 years too. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Alderman Condon? No questions. Alderman Santi?
Have we done a study like this before, Lakeland Park?
I don't, not a, not a comprehensive study like this is going to be. You know, and the timing's great with this too, with the grant line might be available for us.
Did you say grant, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I just said, that was my next question. Is there any grant money available, or are we looking into that?
It's a 60, was it 60, 40 split?
Yes.
Yeah. It's the Section 319 grant.
Yeah, 319.
Yeah, that was actually, as CMAP is going through and doing their watershed study plans, there was actually a group that does the Boondodge Creek area. And as the process was going on, they reached out to engineers and to cities and everybody else in the area and talked about what are the issues. And our project manager on the job was actually involved in that. He was able to get this creek study into the watershed plan, which therefore now makes it eligible to get that 319 grant.
How long has the 319 grant been around?
Yeah, I don't know the history on it. I do know that it's something that has kind of come up along with opening up SRF loans and stuff for drainage improvements. That's the latest buzz now as they're realizing they had to study and go back. They can't just keep pushing water down.
Well, I think, I think too, that they've got different areas now where they just started this watershed planning.
Yes.
There's one just south of us here. This is a new one that's under, apparently under review.
No. Happy to see that we're looking into that. Thanks.
Alderman Glav?
Yeah. I looked at the agreement on this, and again, Lakeland Park Drainage has been one of the things that I have been concerned about since I've been an alderman for 19 years. And looking at this agreement, it seems like we're hell-bent on looking at more dredging than anything else. I mean, you know, that that's what we're looking at. I know we've had a lot of opinions years back, back in the days when we used to get 100-year storms two or three times a year. We were there for two or three years. And we did a lot of, well, there were light studies done, I think, by Baxter and Woodman at that time. But I guess more than anything else is I really want us to stay abreast of what's going on as far as a council. And I don't know if, I know it says that you report back to staff at a certain, you know, phases. Just wonder if just staff, maybe we should send it to the Public Works Committee to look at so that they're aware of what's going on. Because I think as you're going through the study, I think there's going to be a lot of different hats that we need to decide on which way we're going to go as far as those studies. Again, I, I honestly believe that detention is, is going to be one of the major focuses that we have to look at. And of course, locations is going to be another possibility, you know, that we're going to have to really look at. I know we looked at, and I took a ride out there again at the Randall Road, and that's, to me, I'm sure we're going to have to probably look at a pump over there. It's the only way we're going to be able to pump that out of there. I mean, because it comes from all four sides. There's just no, no way to relieve that.
There's an existence, existing source over there that we're going to take a look at that does drain that area, but just not fast enough. I envision maybe enlarging that storm sword. It's very old and not in that good a shape. I think that might alleviate our problem there. And I agree with you. My, my plan is to have all these different alternatives and then bring it to Public Works Committee to discuss the alternatives and then look for some direction on which way, which path we want to take.
Right. But again, like I said, I would hope that we're gonna focus just so much on detention, because it's unfortunate that we're not gonna look at Boone Creek as we're looking at this, because they're both pretty much interconnected together. I mean, they both fight for drainage to the Fox River. Needless to say, it's not like it rains on, in Lakeland Park and it doesn't rain in Whispering Oaks and further south. The whole area is gonna get, you know, hit with heavy rains, let's say hundred-year storm. You know, there's, Mother Nature is very unpredictable at times. And I know in the past, and I've said this at the Public Works meeting, where I've actually seen Boone Creek flow backwards twice in the opposite direction in the last twenty some odd years. That's because of the fact that we would get such heavy rains in Wisconsin the day before it hits here. The river gets up so high that neither one of those drainage ways can actually flow freely into the river. And so consequently, sometimes even back up. And that becomes a problem. And that's why the detention, I think, is just so important to key on. I, I, I just think it's, after all these years, it's so great to see us taking that big step forward. And I would just really like to be kept abreast all the time on this, this whole project, because it's, it's an exciting first step. It really is.
I agree.
Because I think we can make some, some huge significant decisions over there. It's just like, I know years back, we had the one property at Willow and Noel. And I think I'd like to see us look at that as well, considering that's the lowest, I believe it's the lowest area in the entire Lakeland Park area. That house was on a repo list about six, eight, nine months ago. I know that it's still owned by the bank. It was repo'd, I think, for about thirty thousand dollars. And I, I think it would, it costs the city a lot more than that just to try pumping the water out of that area. Maybe that's a good spot for a detention. I don't know. But if we could just look at those, those things, because I think that's important.
That's one of the key areas we discussed.
You know, it, it concerned me, and I don't know if staff even knows this, but I know I talked to a board member of District Fifteen, and they were talking about expanding their parking lot over Parkland. And that, again, you know, winds up running into the Lakeland Park Drainage Way, you know. I mean, it says in here in seventy-two that we took over the maintenance of it, and that the, the state took and, and had re-engineered it at that time and had dredged the creek. And right after they did that, then you had Parkland come in, you had Brittany Park over there, you know, built out. You have water that comes in from the other side of Ringwood Road that used to go to McCullum Lake is now going in there. The gravel pit has immensely grown, so there's that much more drainage. And I can see why it floods all the time. And I, I think another key point that I'd like to, for you guys to look at too, is the fact that some of that water that possibly used to go to McCullum Lake that's going into Lakeland Park Drainage Way, is there any easy way to re- remove that, you know, back to that drainage ditch between West Shore Beach and the city of McHenry behind shore there? Because that creek used to be, when I was a kid, was probably one of the biggest feeders to McCullum Lake. And it's significantly been reduced to probably thirty percent if, or less than what it used to be. Because of the, you know, there's probably still fifty-gallon septic tanks, fifty-gallon barrels, rather, used as septic tanks in West Shore Beach. You know, cottages that were built fifty, sixty years ago. And, and that used to take and dilute a lot of that coliform that came into the lake. And I think that's about the highest concentration on the lake. So, I mean, you know, this, this study could be helpful in a lot of different ways. You know, it might help even McCullum Lake with that. So I just, looking at key points that I'm thinking of, that I want to make sure that we're looking at when, when you guys look at that stuff. I just, like I said, I, I'm really excited about this, and I'm glad to see us taking this great big first step. That's all I have.
Thank you. Alderman Shaker?
Are you gonna drop a resume off, which you had tomorrow?
We might have a position for you there on this project. I have nothing.
Alderman Curry?
Well, first comment, just it's good to see we're gonna move along and use the study and hopefully get some firm direction on where we're going. I assume they'll be building that into the CIP starting next year, because people up there, quite frankly, are suffering in that particular area. So it's, it's good to see. You know, I had the same questions here on the, on the rates, and I understand your explanation. But yet again, when we look under like your sections here, a period of analysis and project manager fourteen hours, it's hard for me to imagine there's more than one guy involved there. And then, and then the tech bin memorandum apparently is prepared by a different person. And then the meetings that, because the rates are different, and then the meetings, the project manager, a much different person who makes a whole lot less money. So I just have a hard time imagining that works out. It looks to me like we have fifty thousand spent, so we're back calculating to get to fifty thousand dollars. And that's the bottom line. But I support the project simply because we need to move. Thank you.
Any further discussion on this item? Did you raise your hand, Alderman Glab?
You know, there was one thing I was wondering if we could break up. I guess I got kind of sidetracked by, oh, Alderman Shaker's comment there. But I guess if I don't remember exactly what it was, I guess it wasn't that, so we won't worry about it.
Okay, thank you. Any further?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
The one comment I did want to make, that's the fact that, yes, there are a lot of people suffering out in Lakeland Park. But also, in the economy we've had, and you take a look at, it used to be that, and I've done a lot of study on house values in our area lately. Where it used to be Whispering Oaks, it used to be valued at almost the same price as Lakeland Park. It seems like Lakeland Park's has really dropped as far as their value since the economy hit. And you see a lot of foreclosures, a lot of empty houses there, more so than anywhere else in the city. And if, hopefully, this really gets out in the papers big, that we're looking to really look at Lakeland Park. And we did get a lot of interested investors, of people that want their first homes, interested in Lakeland Park. It's more, more property EAV, which means more taxes.
Thank you. Any further comments? Please call the roll.
Alderman Wimmer?
Yes.
Alderman Peterson?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Shaker?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. The next item is a motion to authorize staff to advertise for request for proposals for the upgrade and the relocation of the police dispatch center radio system and all associated services and hardware. Chief?
Thank you. Staff is seeking authorization to advertise for proposals for the technical component of the renovation of the McHenry Dispatch Center, doing business as NERCOM. The attached RFP will allow the city to identify a contractor to perform the work under our strict specifications. The request for proposal RFP is to upgrade and relocate the center's radio system and all associated services and hardware. The cost of this upgrade and relocation will be split by the cities of McHenry, Woodstock, and Harbor, with each paying the previously agreed-upon percentage enumerated in the intergovernmental agreement signed between the aforementioned cities. Detailed information regarding this request is provided in the full agenda supplement. Staff will be present to answer any questions when council may add.
Thank you. Looking for a motion on this item, Alderman Condon?
Chief, the motion is presented.
Is there a second, Alderman Shaker?
Second.
Alderman Condon, discussion?
Just, it's great to see this moving forward, and you know, I think it says a lot about our department that we were able to maintain this and able to expand and service the area.
Thank you. Alderman Santi?
I have no questions.
Alderman Glab?
Just one. Chief, how do you sleep at night with this thing going on? I mean, this is just a massive project that you guys have, what we've all undertaken, but you guys are pretty much directing it all. And...
We have pretty good administrative staff too in there, you know, being, one of our members being on the board of the ETSB helps. We have the other that ETSB chose to write the grant for the entire consolidation effort in the McHenry County. So we have a pretty, a couple of pretty knowledgeable people on our staff heading, quite frankly, the county's vision of this also.
When the paint dries, finally the last pigment that you can finally brush and relax. It's all I got.
Thank you, Alderman Shaker.
Does the fire department and the other entities play into this, or why is it just Woodstock and Harbor?
Woodstock and Harbor, we already had that intergovernmental agreement with the fire department. Now, the fire department has been paying additional hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars a year to get us up to speed with the three dispatchers and be part of those board members. These other agencies being Harbor and Woodstock that are closing their dispatch centers, they're becoming partners in this, and they're accruing their percentage of the cost as per their agreement.
So the ones that already existed aren't part of this?
Yeah, there's only one that already exists, and that would be a McHenry intelligent fire protection district. All the rest of them are customers.
Okay.
Alderman Curry?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Alderman Curry?
Just it's good to see this moving along and, you know, can't wait until May.
Alderman Wimmer?
No questions.
Alderman Peterson?
Just so proud of the job they've done so far.
I agree.
And to get this facility here. Arms up.
I agree with you. Any further comments or conversation? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Shaker?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Wimmer?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Peterson?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. The next item is a motion to approve the purchase of two police Ford interceptor sedans and three police Ford utility vehicles from Bus Ford for one hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars. Equipment for four police vehicles, one public works vehicle, and computer mounting hardware for two existing vehicles from Ultra Strobe Incorporated for twenty-four thousand, seventy-one dollars and seventy-three cents. Vehicle graphics from EB Graphics for nine hundred and fifty dollars. And four Panasonic touchpad computers for ten thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars for a total amount not to exceed one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents. Chief?
Council is being asked to consider staff's request to purchase four new police vehicles and one new public works vehicle. Included in this request is the purchase and installation of vehicle equipment, lights, sirens, radios, decals, computers for these five new vehicles, and the purchase and installation of two additional police in squad computers for existing vehicles. All the vehicles and equipment being purchased to replace vehicles scheduled for decommission and equipment that has reached end of life. City has approved CIP funds in the amount of one hundred and eighty-four thousand, three hundred dollars in order to accomplish the completion of this capital project. City staff sought competitive pricing for the purchase of all vehicles identified through the purchasing power of joint purchasing contracts and establish relationships with vendors specializing in emergency equipment. City staff has also been able to secure purchasing for all five vehicles, including equipment, for a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents. Approval of this project will allow for the savings of approximately fifteen thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars and twenty-seven cents in CIP funds. Detailed information regarding this request is provided in the full agenda supplement and attachments. Staff will be present to answer any questions. Council may add.
Thank you. Looking for a motion?
Alderman Curry?
I like this motion. So we approve purchase, authorization to purchase two Ford interceptor sedans, three Ford utility vehicles from Bus Ford for a hundred and thirty-three thousand, three ninety-three. Equipment for four police vehicles, one public works vehicle, and computer mounting hardware for two existing vehicles from Ultra Strobe Incorporated for twenty-four thousand, seventy-one dollars, seventy-three cents. Vehicle graphics from EB Graphics for nine hundred and fifty dollars. And four Panasonic touchpad computers for ten thousand, five forty-four. Total amount not to exceed one sixty-eight, nine fifty-eight, seven...
Thank you. Is there a second, Alderman Santi?
A second, but make sure, you did say four vehicles, right? You didn't say two, did you?
Two police Ford interceptor sedans, you said.
Two police?
Two police.
What's the total?
Total is four, right?
What's the total, chief? It's five.
Total is five.
Total is five, because four, four for police and one for public works, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. I'll second that.
Discussion, Alderman Curry?
Just a question. I noted on, talking about the utility vehicles, the joint purchasing contract. The contract is valid, but the order cutoff date was March fourth, which of course is, you know, before our normal budgeting process is done. Is that something in the future that we need to figure out how to get ahead of, or is that, are we doing better on pricing anyway?
Actually, if you look at it, we've done better on pricing for smaller than, you know, sometimes we can use that as almost a benchmark for asking for consideration from local dealers.
Thank you.
Alderman Wimmer?
No questions.
Alderman Peterson?
No questions.
Alderman Condon?
No questions.
Alderman Santi?
I have no questions.
Alderman Glab?
Nothing.
Alderman Shaker?
No questions.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Wimmer?
Yes.
Alderman Shaker?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is committee reports. Are there any committee reports this evening?
We had a parks meeting tonight. We'll have minutes for it coming.
Any other committee reports? It's not on the agenda, but it should have said mayor's reports, but I don't have anything this evening. Are there any staff reports today? Chiefs?
This Friday is...
Lots of staff reports.
This Friday is cop on top at Duncan Owens raising money for Special Olympics. We ask that you come and see, get our officers off the roof. We've been pretty successful with that, and it's, it's a great partnership with, with Special Olympics.
What time is that?
We're usually out there starting at around five AM, and we'll be there till two in the afternoon.
Chief, is Johnsburg still at the north side?
They are. We give them that one. It's a healthy competition.
Don't go to that, don't go to that.
Yeah, go to the one on one twenty, please.
They might be there later. Go there later.
Any other staff reports?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to introduce Scott Schwaiter. Scott is our new street superintendent in Public Works.
Welcome, Scott.
So you're not, is that the new SUVs for you, Scott?
And then I want to mention too, this Saturday, we're having an electronic waste recycling collection again this year. And that's at the Public Works Facility from nine AM to noon. This program is free for city of McHenry residents, and they must have a current vehicle sticker on their, on the vehicle that they bring the electronics with. Thank you.
Does that mean, I'm sorry, Mayor, is that, because we're right in the process of new ones, so...
Right. I'm assuming you mean from twenty...
Twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen?
Sixteen.
New ones aren't due yet.
Right. Yeah, they're just...
Either one.
Just getting started. Some people may have, right? And then, sorry, Mayor, on that, what is, I get asked, what is accepted?
Okay, televisions, monitors, computers, laptops, electronic mice, and many other electronic items that you may have your own.
Thanks. Bring it all, you have to, pretty much.
Any other staff reports this evening?
Well, it's about the time to start some of our fun stuff, I guess. Starting this Friday, we'll have the grand opening VIP event for the Recreation Center, so if you're available, five thirty to seven on that. Followed the next day, this Saturday, will be the community grand opening for the Recreation Center. There'll be a lot of activities going on there, inflatables, and there'll be vendor tables set up in the back room. There'll be some obstacle courses and class demos and just the, a whole weekend. I should say Saturday and Sunday, the facility will be open to the public, so they can come in and utilize that for free if they'd like to. Again, we've also added a summer membership. That's three months for ninety-nine dollars, no initiation fee. So that's going on at the Recreation Center. And then we jump into some of our other events. The high school graduation is going to be outside on Crackin' Field on Thursday, just so you're aware of that. We approved that a couple, maybe I think May, the May second meeting. But then cruise nights will start next Monday. Same, right, right on Greve Street, right there in that central lot, same format, so that'll be an exciting kickoff this summer. The farmers markets actually start this week, so this Thursday from four to seven thirty, our farmers market schedule kicks off. And we have over twenty vendors this year, which is our largest array of vendors that we have had ever. If we are going to move the vendor row off of Court Street instead of Park Street, there's a little bit more room for us to take advantage, space there to spread the vendors out. So, and that will continue throughout the season, so you'll have, when the band concerts start the following Thursday on, on May twenty-sixth, you'll have the food vendors followed by the farmers market vendors all on the same side there. So we'll hope, hopefully that will help with some continuity at the event.
That's awesome.
What's our membership up to now?
Our membership is one thousand, one hundred and eighty.
That's awesome.
Question on cruise night. Are they going to have any, they did like live concerts or live bands, like once every fourth or fifth? Are they gonna do any of those?
That's the plan.
Okay.
I will, I don't have, I don't have a band list yet.
You don't know what the first one is?
I don't know.
Not first, okay. Thank you.
And I, just real quickly, I try to keep council apprised now of chamber ribbon cuttings and mixers. There was some confusion on a couple of them, but I sent out an email today, this afternoon to council. There's one at Walgreens at eleven o'clock on Wednesday for their, it's really for advocate that does business through Walgreens there, but it's at Walgreens. And then on Friday, Current Contracting, I'm out on Dot Street, is having an open house from nine to, I think, four, but there's a ribbon cutting there at the facility at ten thirty, just to, just so you're aware of that. Thanks.
Thank you. I hope that you'll all be able to come on Friday night for the grand opening celebration, if you will. I, I just can't applaud our staff enough for the job that they have done on not only designing and getting that rec center built, but what has happened since in the time that we've been opened has been phenomenal. I'm sure you're all hearing, as I am, the rave reviews in the community. It's just a great accomplishment for us, and I hope you can be there to help us celebrate. Other than that, anything else? Any future agenda items this evening? Seeing none, looking for motion to adjourn. Alderman? Is there a second, Alderman Santi?
I will second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Alderman Wimmer?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Shaker?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Peterson?
Yes.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Motion carried.